Work session. Item number one is a Smithsonian update from Mr. Tom Kepke.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Thanks for making some time for this Smithsonian wrap-up today. Started working on this project in July. As you can imagine, how excited we are to be transitioning from this project to the next. I have some slides up there. In order to avoid the turning around back and forth that I went through last time, we're gonna...
I don't know that they're gonna be seeing it though, but...
Okay. I don't know if anybody remembers the shark and remora from my last presentation. They're making a repeat appearance here. And I bring this up because reflective of the way that the Smithsonian project was designed from the beginning. You know, in the ocean, the shark and remora have a mutually beneficial relationship. They each get something, nobody suffers. And we were looking at the Smithsonian as our shark. And... I hope you're just gonna do that one.
Sure, I'll do that one.
Perfect. Crossroads Change the Rural America was our shark. And our objective was to create a school of remora. I think last time we were trying to figure out, is it remora or remorai? I still don't know what the plural of that is. But for Smithsonian, we had 18 events, 10 exhibitions, five film screenings. It looked like roller scouts and corn mothers and brim and echoes of history and steam. I mean, the list goes on and on. Here's a few more. And to date, this is probably the biggest Smithsonian exhibit and companion exhibits for Crossroads that's taken place anywhere. I was thinking about including some photographs of other municipalities that have hosted this, but I didn't want to accidentally denigrate anybody. This project is rather massive and makes other versions of it look a little anemic. So we don't want to single anybody out. But it is reflective of the involvement in the community. I don't know if you've been over to the Commons where Smithsonian was, but there's a really big banner over there which has got the names of more than 315 individuals and organizations who contributed in some way to the Smithsonian. And at the beginning of this project, one of the questions that was asked of me at a reunion that I went to is, "Are you having a hard time getting people to sign up and be involved with this?" And I was really optimistic at the time, and I said, "No." And I'm glad that these numbers support that level of optimism. We learned a lot. I produced or curated all of these events and exhibitions with a group of people that I'd never worked with before. So you can imagine, if you've ever been part of a creative team, what the learning curve can be when you're a new person in town, working with people who all know each other and often times know each other rather well. So I'm really proud of the work that everybody did. I was doing a little back and act in sketch, because you know, of course, we're in grant reporting phase right now. And we're probably gonna hit about 1,500 hours, volunteer hours. And I think that they value those hours at $24 an hour. So, you know, 1,500 times, what's that, $36,000 worth of volunteer time, which, you know, is not something that we were certainly forecasting. But I think it is reflective of our ability to do one of three things. There were really three audiences in my mind for this project. One is the city. Two are sponsors, which there are many. And then also volunteers and create an opportunity where people, excuse me, can be, feel really proud of their role in making this thing as big and as successful as it was. And I think by all measures, I've not gotten any feedback to contrary yet, but I think we sort of stuck the landing on all three of those fronts. So if anybody has any questions, this is a two-parter for me today. And I promise, I know you guys have got a party to go to at 5:00, so this will... I promise I'll be done by 5:30. If you have any questions about Smithsonian, you know, I know all of the gory details, so...
Just a question, how is the participation from the town and the public going to these affairs? I mean, are you getting a lot of people coming in there to view a lot of this? Or, you know, I mean, just overall?
Yeah, that's kind of hard to measure, because many of these exhibits have been up for six or eight weeks in many venues. So it's hard to really know what the total number of foot traffic was. But what I can say is, you know, the opening of, you know, the grand opening of Smithsonian, we estimated it was about 400 people there that were there just on that day. When we opened Corn Mothers and Brim at the Mitchell on December 1st, by the Mitchell's estimates, it was about the same. Those are the same numbers that we got for the opening of Good Night Moon. So that's what I have to compare it to. But for matriarch and patriarch, roller scouts, I'd say they were between... I was rather busy emceeing and being an elf or, you know, whatever. But we probably had 40 to 50 people at each of those opening events, which considering that matriarch and patriarch and roller scouts were all icy road days, I think we did a pretty good job. The feedback that I've gotten from volunteers and from the public is that everybody loves it. If they didn't, they probably wouldn't say anything in my face. But...
Well, the reason I ask that is, you know, there's such a variety and group there. We kind of need to, maybe somehow or another, as a council, help you get some more information out so we can draw more free people and get stuff in there. And I don't know, I mean, exactly how we would do that if, you know, we don't have a real newspaper to speak of anymore daily and stuff like that. But is there anything that you might have an idea of what we could do to bring this out more?
Yeah, so we did a lot of experiments. I'm a designer by trade, so everything I do today is a prototype for what I do tomorrow. So everything is iterative. And one of the challenges, and we'll probably touch on this a little bit in the second half of this presentation, but communication is such, it's crucial and it's really hard. Even when you do everything you possibly can to get the word out and the message across, somebody's not gonna hear it. And so we were looking at two ways of getting the word out. One, you know, online, I'll just call that the digital sphere. The other is analog, because not everybody's on Facebook. Trinidad's rather fluid in Facebook, but not everybody speaks it. So we focused all of our attention on Facebook. And I have the Facebook stats for the period during the Smithsonian and prior. Across every category, we're up a couple hundred percent by all of their metrics. But knowing that we couldn't reach everybody online, we did some experiments. We had some really incredible media partners. I'm just gonna single out Councilperson DeBono. I don't know how many interviews we did on Lost...
Baker's dozen.
Baker's dozen. So, yeah, we were on the airwaves, we were on the radio down in Raton a couple of times. We did a podcast. And we also printed 7,000 copies of the program guide. 4,000 of them got inserted directly into the utility bill. 3,000 split, 1,500 and 1,500 got inserted into the World Journal and also into The Weekender. So we tried to get the information directly into people's homes without having to ask them to do anything out of the ordinary, opening up the utility bill. Maybe people tried to avoid doing that, but when they did, they had no alternative but to see the Smithsonian program guide. I wish that that was a way, something that we could measure. And maybe Councilperson DeBono can speak to what the airwave space looks like. I've never understood Nielsen ratings, because nobody ever is on my TV or radio or asks me, so I don't know how that works. But we did everything that we possibly can, including tickers and, you know, tickets and flyers. And our posters are three feet by four feet. Yeah, and which, in terms of, you know, getting people's attention is great. But one of the things that we learned as a result of that is not everybody has a three-foot-by-four-foot space in their storefront. So we did learn some lessons around that, thankfully. We had a print partnership with Trinidad State. So all of our photographs, all of our posters, all of that stuff was printed due to some in-kind support from Trinidad State. And if I were gonna single anybody out on city staff, I would put a big old three-by-four-foot photograph of the niece of Roth. Probably 100 hours of design work. She designed every piece of collateral that we had. And she and I spent many nights at 9:00, 10:00, sitting over at the collaboratory, printing these things out. So she, you know, we would do well to clone her, and I'll take one permanently. So I hope that answers your question.
Well, I just want to make sure that we're getting this all out to the public and drawing in, because you're doing a lot of work, and like you say, staff and other people are doing this. So we want to make it worthwhile where we can get a lot of people to come to that and appreciate what you're doing. It's really, really good.
Mayor, in Ken, we had various school groups that bust in from other communities, correct?
Yeah. To come to the exhibit. We had, I mean, from the beginning, as I mentioned the last time I was in front of council, generally what happens with a community that hosts this exhibit is they focus on their town. Or maybe they focus on their county. And just in terms, like Brim, here we have Solano's down in Raton. Every one of these exhibits, we would talk to somebody, and they had a family or member or a friend in another place, like, well, if we don't include them in this narrative, then the story is incomplete. And we also, you know, it's important, economically speaking, that we do everything that we can to support and bolster micro-tourism. So just like with Good Night Moon, we had people coming from all over the region to that. We replicated that approach in order to bring people in from all over the region. And we had people from both coasts fly in to see Smithsonian. One of, one person was gonna fly in from out of the country and couldn't. So I don't know how that's, I mean, I don't know how to design for that stuff. We did something right, that we had people willing to travel as far as they did. And we still have people coming in. I want to say that the steam exhibit, which is those nine different sizes of railroad, those people, I just got some, you know, some hours from them. I think that those three people, two people in particular, probably spent just 500 hours, just the two of them, building that thing. It's really spectacular. And they're still there. Because after the exhibit and after Smithsonian, they said, you know, "We love these trains, we love train people." And they opened up a little pop-up train shop. So people are bringing their families, you know, pre-World War II train sets in to be fixed, and they're running them on the tracks. Kids are hanging art on the wall and, you know, so the ripple effect of this, like, the enthusiasm lives on. You know, Smithsonian left on January 13th, and here we are, you know, on the 29th. And we still have people willing to volunteer their own time in order to keep that thing open. To me, that feels like success, so...
I just want to say, I think one of the best things that came out of it was being able to visualize how that area, the Commons, can be used for future festivals, things that brought people. And I think the thing that I thought that got the most response was people walking around the big room and reading the placards about people who have grown up here, some of whom they knew, some who they didn't. I love that. And I, because I think we need to, as a community, get to know each other as well as we possibly can. And that's gonna be a great space for that kind of activity.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. Well, I would say, just in terms of that space, so you've got here is my partner, partner in real deal, who, she's the person who knitted Good Night Moon, all 6 million stitches of it. And we first, our first chunk of, our first part in Trinidad was at the opening of Space to Create with the Frog, that she knitted. Which I forget how many stitches that is, but it's a lot. But since the opening of Space to Create up until this moment, if you count all the Smithsonian events and Good Night Moon and all the field trips, we've made 30-plus events happen in that space since it opened. I don't know that there are any two people that have caused more to happen in that building. Obviously collaborating and working with lots of other people. But our fingerprints are all over it. In fact, we're gonna be going down there to get the rest of Good Night Moon out of there after we're done here. So I agree. I think that is a phenomenal space. As an artist, when looking for a venue that is that big, that is that flexible, that can house these kinds of things, you have to travel in order to find a venue that can accommodate these kinds of things. And when the tech gets in there, I mean, we have ideas for the kinds of things that... I mean, we have lots of projects in the works, but getting that tech package in there will be a game changer in a lot of ways. So selfishly, we're sort of looking forward to that.
I think I just want to thank you for bringing that to our community and keeping it up. It is a wonderful program, and I can't wait to see what more you do with it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ditto, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was gonna say, my family went down on multiple occasions, and we really did enjoy it. Told multiple individuals from town as well. And I would say, Frank, I think you're right. It is funny how many people that are local to Trinidad didn't know about it. I mean, I told multiple people and I said, "Oh, I didn't know." And that's not an indictment. I mean, obviously, you put a lot of effort into getting it out there. But I think as those progress, we get more and more involvement. But it was fantastic.
Well, you know, I'm a, I'm an art business person, you know? And you've probably heard me say this, that the idea is to not make artwork, but to make art work. And that's a standard that we apply to art that it really shines a light and makes you perform. It'd be nice if we just made a painting and, you know, walked away and felt good about it. But we're trying to have an impact here and something that we can measure. And I agree, I'm not sure how to reach everyone. I'm glad that word of mouth works, and I appreciate that you shared that with people, because that really is the most effective way. And getting people out is not easy. You know, how many people are here today? How many people go to anything? As a matter of fact, one of the things that we're hoping, you know, to accomplish with this is, you know, last year, we lost two of our most beloved, right? We lost the Blues Fest and we lost Cartopia. Those are two things, I mean, people turned it out for that and are still gone. So that raises a question, as an artist, as a producer, as somebody who works in this domain, what's the after action on that? And so some of what we were hoping to do was sort of stem the tide. If that's contagious, whatever it is that's causing some of our most beloved things to fall away, we need to figure out, as an arts community, we need to figure out what's causing that and band together and, you know, do something about it, which I'm about to, once we get done with Smithsonian, I'll quickly go through to answer your question of what's next for us. So no one has any questions or comments?
Just thank you so much. That had to be a labor of love. Not unless you paid, you got paid a half a million dollars.
Not quite.
Not quite?
Yeah. Yeah, well, so I think that's important. We raised probably 70% of the money that went into this project.
Wonderful.
Which we do, that's one of the commitments that we make. We raised all of the money for Good Night Moon. We only got $500 outside of our own efforts for that. And as I, you know, tried to tell the team, it's not my aim to create a problem and then hand it off to somebody, because that's not very cool. And everybody else is busy too. So we try to manage all of our own work and reduce the stress and strain on the city, on the community, and have it be a net gain positive. So, yeah, maybe next time we'll raise half a million dollars, but we were just shy of that on this project. But this is not, you know, art is not a profiteering thing. Like, you don't, there are other reasons. Just like everybody here has other reasons for doing what it is that they do that have nothing to do with money. Tears are one of mine. All the women who were up on stage for matriarch and many of them who were in the audience shed a tear. And the story share, same thing. Patriarch, all three of the men that were on that stage had tears in their eyes. That's how, that's one of the ways that we can measure the impact that we're having on the community and having really important, sometimes difficult conversations that we need to have and that are not easy to have, but they're worth having, so...
Well, your drive and energy is only superseded by your compassion to design and produce. You make me cry.
I did a little acting growing up, so I can shed a tear. So, yeah, so, you know, the question that people ask, what's next? Some of you will recognize this letter, mostly the people whose names are up on here. As artists, we're trying to perfect our funding formula. And one of the things that I, that we're gaining some traction around, you know, our statewide arts organization is Colorado Creative Industries. There are a number of grant opportunities, one of which is called Arts in Society. Our first two grants, one for Frog, one for Moon, were both funded without review, above 90% of what it is that we asked. And for Good Night Moon, the funder didn't even know what we were doing. It was not about the art itself so much as it is what it is that we were trying to accomplish with the art. And I'll share a little bit about that. So as many of you might be aware, we're getting older. So for the first time in recorded history, and this is a global phenomenon, there are more people over the age of 60 than there are under 18. All you have to do is a quick Google search around that. I put this slide together today. The infographics from all around the world that speak to this trend, there's no shortage of them. I just grabbed these and threw them in there. But more specifically to Trinidad, 18.1, and this is off of the most recent census. You really have to do some math and some combing through that website in order to get the data that you need. 18% of the people in Trinidad are under 18. 29.4% are over 60. Those are, you know, you hear 55, like, I don't remember how old we all were when we started getting AARP mail. Was it 50 or 55? Probably earlier and earlier, right? So the group of people that we're focusing on, we move it down to age 45, and this is for two reasons. One reason is that at the age of 45, you start feeling your own age in ways. Maybe the creaks, the vision, you start getting one of these. But the other reason is that statistically speaking, across the United States, 29% of people age 45 and over are taking care of an older friend, family, or loved one. The majority of those are women. And on average, they spend 20 hours a week caring for this person. In the state of Colorado, that hour is worth $20.07. So you do the math, we're looking at over $23 million per year in unpaid care given to a family member, per year, in Trinidad alone. So the impacts of this unprecedented, unprecedented demographic shift are felt everywhere and by everyone, either directly or indirectly. And this day and age, there are a growing number of people in this 45 and over who are not only taking care of an older loved one, but still have a younger person living in their house who, you know, back when I was coming up, should have been out on their own. Times change. So imagine the stress on those people. And when we're looking at 60-year-olds and up, we're leaving these 45-year-olds and up out of it. So that's the population that we're looking at for this next project. As you probably know, whenever there's a problem, and people do see aging as a problem, everybody does their best to avoid it. And one of the things that's happening is, you know, the tech sector right now, one of the fastest-growing areas of the tech sector is age tech, right? So the sharks smell opportunity when it's obvious that there are some problems to be solved. So there is growing momentum to capitalize on this and innovate. The one thing that is also true is the state of Colorado naturally is seen as a leader in what is described as age-friendly initiatives. And as much work that is being done at the state level to trickle down to rural communities like ours, we're not feeling the effects of that. It takes a while for that, for legislation or a new policy to make itself, make its way down here. And our next project, we need to change that. We're collaborating with local, regional, and state partners, including many of you with your support just so far, just by signing that letter of support, which will be invaluable for getting the funding for this project. But we want to expand the role that the arts play in the age-friendly initiatives statewide. It's ambitious, I admit. So how do we do this? In 2018, so in response to this global demographic shift, there's a worldwide initiative around what's called age-friendly or livable communities. And all of the countries that have signed on to this global initiative are, you know, have their own processes in place. The United States, AARP, is sort of the steward of that initiative. And under Governor, then Governor Hickenlooper, Colorado was the third state to become designated as an age-friendly community. The red states are designated age-friendly states. All the black dots are either a county or a municipality, such as Trinidad. Last year, you know, the state of Colorado had it, or in '22, the state of Colorado had a really ambitious goal. They wanted 100 more age-friendly designated communities by 2023. There are 21 of them right now. A handful of those are dormant. They signed up and they're not doing anything with it. The most recent being Walsenburg, which I led the initiative to get Walsenburg designated as an age-friendly community. And like any good designer, I learned a lot from that failure. First of all, don't ever launch an initiative right before an election. Seems obvious, right? So that's why I'm here today and not three months ago. So I do learn from my mistakes. But I learned a lot of other things from that too. So when I presented this opportunity to the Los Angeles County Commissioners, it was in a work session just like this. it was in a work session just like this. It was me and the three of them. And for about an hour and a half, they grilled me on this. And they said, ah, we don't have any money for this. You need to talk to the city of Trinidad. Well, Trinidad was flush with cannabis cash at the time, so I think that's why that they were sending me to you. But I did not rush in here, you know, to launch this initiative then. Because they had some really good feedback for me. And I would say that one of the pieces of feedback that really resonated was, oh, this is just another unfunded mandate. Why did I tell you before that? An unfunded mandate didn't mean anything to me because I never heard about it unless it was on the news. So I waited, and I continued doing my work. We've been working on laying the foundation for this project for three years, which for somebody like me is a real act of patience. But, so what has happened in, in that time? Well, the state of Colorado, when it signed on, became a designated state, everybody who pursues that designation agrees to a couple of things. One is you come up with a plan. So the state of Colorado, and I guess I should look at my slides, but the state of Colorado did three things. One, they made that commitment. And one of the commitments was that they were going to take a look at how they spend two billion dollars a year across seven departments who support and address the lives of older people. So they're doing that. The other thing is the Older Coloradans Act, they modernized that. So in '22, this, the new modernization of the Older Coloradans Act was actually signed into law, which makes a huge difference, I've learned. And the other thing that they did is they created Lifelong Colorado, which is a locally-driven, bottom-up statewide initiative to support municipalities, whether the size of Branson or El Paso County, to come together and to begin to address the challenges that they're facing in their communities hyper-locally as a result of their own aging populations, because nobody knows us like we do. So this is not, there's nothing coming down at us from the Capitol. So, which is refreshing. They also, SAPCA, which was the statewide commission on aging, that sunsetted last year. The new thing is called Colorado Commission on Aging. And as you might imagine, it's a governing and coordinating body. And it has some subcommittees. I sit on the subcommittee for age-friendly communities. I go to these meetings every month. I have conversations with our policy director on aging. Every month, I had one right before I came here today, so that I can learn and have a better understanding of what's happening out of the Capitol, what's happening statewide with other communities that are like Trinidad, or bigger than Trinidad, or smaller than Trinidad, or more affluent, or less affluent. What, what is everybody doing? And what opportunities exist as a result of the commitment that the state is making in this space? And so I have both learned a lot, and I have met a lot of people. And I don't say this with any great pride, but I'm often the only person on those calls from South Colorado Springs. I can, I can name a number of people whose roles might compel them to be on those calls and are part of these commissions, but they aren't. So I see that as an opportunity. Because I have a perspective that is informed by what is going on across the state. And I see a real opportunity there. In a former life, I was an innovation consultant. And I worked in the United States and internationally. When there's a problem, a lot of people run from it. Flip that over from the perspective of an innovator, there's just opportunity in there. But it's messy, and it's hard. And a lot of the people shy away from that. I love it. So the goal was to, you know, how do we bring these programs and the resources that will inevitably arise from all this work in the state down to Trinidad? How do we do that? I see, you know, when I close my eyes at night and I'm thinking about this work, which Emily will attest I do far too often, I see the potential for Trinidad to have the strongest network of age-friendly-related entities anywhere in the state, but certainly in Southern Colorado. And the result of that, not only the direct benefit to our community, but also that Trinidad can become a hub for this work. Also, you know, New Mexico has their own, you know, their own programs around this. And I could see, you know, us collaborating with our friends across the border to do things, because we have more in common with each other than we do our capitals. So annual report came out. If anybody wants to dive in into the most recent report, I'm happy to share. I can email it to whomever, or, you know, you can all grab the QR code off of my screen if you want. But that is the most up-to-date on what's happening in these statewide initiatives. So the framework that is being used around the world in order to sort of manage and make sense of age-friendly initiatives are called the eight domains of livability. Transportation, housing, social participation, respect and social inclusion, civic participation and employment, communication and information, community support and health service, outdoor spaces and buildings. The one thing, as an artist, and I would say a creative entrepreneur, for lack of a better term, the thing that's missing in this is creativity, whether it's art and design. And I've had this conversation, I had this conversation with Jared Hughes, who's the policy advisor on aging today. And I've had this conversation with arts organizations around the state, is that nowhere in here is there a place for creativity, art, and design. And the assumption is that it's implicitly a part of this process. Or if you're familiar with, you know, working in large institutions, that it exists in between the silos. I'm not attached to whether it is explicit or if it just is implicitly in place. The question is, what opportunity does this existence present to us? So thus, on the earlier slide, when I said part of our goal is to increase the role that the arts play in age-friendly initiatives statewide, so far, we're the only two people, Emily and myself, that have gotten arts grants because we're aligned with this work. And we're sort of working the kinks out of that, but we want to share that model. We're confident in our ability to stay ahead of the curve. We're first to market on this, which is a lot cheaper than being second to market. And we can't do all this work ourselves, and there are so many players in this town that would benefit from copying some of what it is that we do, that our next project aims to do just that. There's an off-site statistic that Colorado is number one in the country for arts consumption, right? It also ranks forty-sixth in the nation for arts funding at about thirty-five cents per capita. What is an arts organization in Trinidad, Colorado, supposed to do when there's only two million dollars being pumped into our statewide arts agency? And people in Trinidad don't know about it. I think that we might be the only people that have received an Arts in Society grant in Trinidad. Which, given that it is one of the most flexible and lucrative grant opportunities, we should have more competition in that. By the time we're done this year, we will. We've already submitted our grant. And it in part supports the work that we're going to be doing with other arts organizations in Trinidad. We've been quietly building a coalition, talking with executive directors and board presidents and board members about the challenges that they face as an arts organization. One thing that's happening is costs are going up and funding is going down. And the people in Trinidad are all swimming around trying to get a bite out of the same pool of funds. If arts programming or funding for nonprofits in Trinidad is in any way attached to the tax revenue from our cannabis industry, is that number going to stay the same? Go up or go down as revenue from that industry continues to decline? So what do we do? What do we do with an industry that is a pillar of the future that we are all envisioning? Whether it's being an arts destination or outdoor rec? What do we do with these arts organizations that are getting enough money to stay afloat, but not enough to grow or not enough to innovate? And the, this aging population and what is happening in terms of funding to address those challenges? As I said in the early slide, this is the time to be in the mix. This is when we innovate. Because we have an opportunity to be first to market in a number of different ways. And so my proposal is that typically what happens, and this is what happened in Walsenburg, and it's also what's happening in some of the other communities that are not moving on this, is that it requires, you know, there's a process for this. You enroll, you go through your first year, have planning, development action plan. How many of you think that we need yet another planning process? Nobody, right? when we're pursuing this age-friendly designation, and I'll just cut to it, what I, what I strongly encourage is that the city of Trinidad pursue and achieve this designation. And to be honest, part of this is branding. You know, you give a sticker, so to speak. And we may not see place a lot of value on that, but for the arts community and nonprofit organizations that are competing for funding outside of Trinidad, aligning their missions and their work with a municipality that is pursuing this designation gives them a strategic advantage in the funding marketplace when they're going and competing for the same pool of two million dollars. And the state is paying attention and investing in Lifelong Colorado and updating the older color, like they're doing a lot in this area. We are at a point where if our organizations, our arts organizations are competing for limited funds, and what they're doing is aligned with what the state is wanting, which is how do we support older people? Doing that within a municipality that votes with its vote, so to speak, and becomes an age-friendly designated community gives them a real strategic advantage. We're prepared to work with those organizations over the next year to educate, inform, and show them how it is that we pursue these funds so that they can replicate that approach. And the only thing that we would need at this point from the city of Trinidad is, well, your signature mayor. And what I would advocate for is rather than launching into some other planning process, the timing couldn't be better as we are in a strategic planning process. In these domains, you can do anything that you want. You don't have to do anything in all these domains. Your plan can be anything. What I would suggest is that the city of Trinidad adopts the collective plan of the arts organization as its first initial plan for this designation. So that we can leverage what it is that these organizations are already doing, help attract funding to it without taxing the city.
Ken, sorry to interrupt, but you probably need to wrap things up. No, okay, good. And then council, we advertised on the agenda Smithsonian update, and then Ken wanted to talk about some of his future initiatives. Today probably wouldn't be a good time, especially with timing, to get into conversation about this item, but I think this is a receive and file. But I think we can keep communicating with Ken about these things and certainly give Ken some, some feedback and some ideas on how we.
Thank you. Yes, I think we need to do that. Also, I, I need your opinion on work session item number five. Councilman, your Williamson's going to have to leave early, right? On the transportation?
Um, I have, I have time, but if you want to move on.
Mayor, council, you certainly can move that item up if you wanted to, but if we push through the other items, we probably have no time.
We'll give it a shot, and then if time runs out, we'll reevaluate.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Ken, thank you. We'll continue with the discussions, for sure. Item number two, board and commission applicant interviews. So you have a list of the each advisory commission that has vacancies and the people that have applied for this, appointments to these commissions. So who is in charge? No one.
You are here.
I am, okay. All right. So we start first with Arts and Culture Advisory Commission. There is just a footnote. The staff asked for reappointment without a second interview for people who have already been on one of these commissions. So the first one is Arts and Culture. And the first applicant is Joyce Miller, who is, is a reappointment, right, Ms. Miller?
Yes.
And there's four vacancies on Arts and Culture. And the second applicant is McCabe Hens. Are you here, Mr. Hens?
He wasn't signed for us.
He is not, okay. Is Mr. Hens available?
Yeah, he was here. Let me go see if he's stepped out, because he was here.
So in the case of these people that are applying and they don't come forward for an interview, what is the process?
Well, Mayor, I, I would say it's up to you. You could require them to be here. It's unfortunate if we had someone here and they're not here now. But you could take action without them being here. You could, I mean, I, I know you hate to postpone it, but. But I.
Do you have something?
I'd just say, I know, Mayor, I can, I know Joyce isn't the one that we're concerned about about that, but I can attest that she's a very vital member of the Arts and Culture Advisory Commission, and they will be likely to have her back. Thank you.
Does council have any? Couldn't find him?
No.
He was here.
He was, yeah.
They're willing to interview me. You know, postpone it. I mean, I think when they put an application in, they should be told that they have to be here. Because that's the reason we set this up, to interview, to find out what it is. If they don't show up.
And they were told that, um, Mayor and Council.
So then, are they notified because of the way we changed the meeting? We didn't change the meeting, but would they notify everybody that's on these lists? Or were they notified of that?
They were all called.
Okay, yeah. And Mayor, council, we tell them that the work session is at 3:00 PM. Obviously, there's other orders of business. So they all have access to the agenda as well.
So what is council's desire just to have Mr. Hens reapply?
I, Mayor, council, what I would suggest is let's postpone. We'll reach out to him and see, you know, if there was an emergency or something. But he was here at the beginning of the meeting.
Just, just real quick, because I'm one of the applicants. When I got the phone call, they told me I had to be here for an interview, but they didn't tell me it was during a meeting. So that might have been why he stepped out.
Oh.
Because he didn't have the time. Just, just an FYI, because I was expecting this either.
We'll give him the benefit of the doubt. We'll retry him. Okay, second commission members are for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. There's two vacancies, and there are five people applying for a position. Ms. Miller, you're the first one on the list. Would you like to come forward, so council can ask you a few questions? Mr. Williamson, you want to start on that side?
Certainly.
First off, thank you so much for your interest in serving on boards. It's obviously super important. What is your personal reason to want to serve on that board?
Well, I've been here for about nine years, and I lived in Florida, and I took a pin and went, I want to go to someplace where I can hike and fish and do things like that. And this turned out to be the place, and I thought, well, if you're picking the place you're living, then you should, you know, give back a little bit in some respect. So I've been trying to, and I've been on Parks and Rec for two terms already. And I would like to finish the one because I'm going to get a trail to the State Park up there. That's one of my pet projects, so.
Okay, Mr. Sturman?
I know, Ms. Joyce. What makes you want to decide to give it another, another go around besides building a trail to the State Park?
Well, you know, we're working on a more emphasis on youth and recreation for the youth of this community, and I think that's a very worthwhile thing to do. We've got plans for trying to get a, not a trail, but a way to get from, say, downtown to the community center for kids, you know, like maybe a bike trail or a walking trail or something that's safe and interesting for them. And, you know, there's just a lot of things that our community can do. We want to do some more improvements on the parks that we already have and get some bare trash cans and, you know, different kinds of things like that, things like that. But I just feel it's a worthwhile thing to do, and I like to hike and fish and, you know, whatever, so.
You kind of answered what I just wrote down, but I was just curious, like with future goals for existing parks, like what focuses would you have, for example, for like Kit Carson Park?
Well, what we did was an inventory, last year, we did an inventory of all the parks that we have, and we wrote down all these things that we thought would improve the park. So I don't know, I think Kit Carson, they, you know, I think they needed to have some renovation of the playground equipment and things like that, and trying to do, you know, different things with, with the
Sebo.
Huh?
The Sebo.
Let me see, thank you. Yeah, and, you know, just generally trying to, just a certain improvements. I know we don't have huge budgets right now, but I think we can also, you know, like tables for handicapped people, you know, things like that. You know, just, just generally make it an improved park for people to use and things.
Thank you.
So your, your comments that you made to the questions that were asked leads me to believe that you're involved somehow with Parks and Rec. Are you, it's unofficial? I know you're on Arts and
She's been on there for two terms.
On, because it says you're on Parks and Rec?
Yeah, I've been on two terms. I helped with the wormhole loop trail. I helped with, you know, things like the Fisher's Peak and all that. So I think it's, I think it's maybe years or something, you know, so.
All right, it doesn't list that as as that you being a current member. So I have to ask you, there's four, four, there's four, five people applying for this committee on only two vacancies, and you're already on the Arts and Culture Commission. I'm thinking maybe it would be better served to have someone else take your position on Parks and Rec.
That's up to you guys.
I know, I know, but I don't want to minimize your, minimize your commitment to this, and it seems like you're, it's a possibility is what I'm saying. And, you know, I just don't want you to feel that it's not a reflection of your past work on the Parks and Rec.
No, that's fine with me. Whatever y'all decide to do.
So you handled both of the commissions very well, time management?
So far, I've been able to do it. I'm chairman on the Arts and Culture. And so that one, that takes up a little bit more time than I have. But, you know, I try to participate in every way I can with
I apologize for not knowing that you were already on that commission.
That's okay.
Thank you. No. Mr. Hens?
Well, I, I think that's the biggest question is your time, if you can, you know. We'd rather, we want you to do, put your time, maybe one for both if you're going to do it, but it's up to you, right? I kind of think if you're answering the question that you think you can handle it.
Well, so far, I've been able to handle it, but, you know, I can understand if you want to have some, another person on there that would, you know, because I have been on there for quite a while.
Well, it's not that we want somebody, we just want to make sure that you can handle it and not put you in a position where you won't be able to make meetings or something.
No.
Because it's important that we get people to participate in the meetings. That's why we're putting you on there.
Yeah. I absolutely understand that, and that's very, very important for people to go to the meetings, that's for sure. So far, I haven't had a problem with it, but, you know, I mean, things could come up, but I couldn't say for sure.
Well, thank you, Joyce, for, excuse me, for wanting to be on the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. Do you have a primary goal of recreational activities for the senior citizens as opposed to the younger children?
Well, I think that the walking trails and things are very, very good for the senior citizens, absolutely. You know, the ones that are more difficult, maybe not, but, but, you know, we've got a lot of healthy people in this town, you know, that are senior citizens, I'm one of them.
So am I.
And I, you know, I think that, that the activities that we have here is a bit plus for senior citizens, absolutely.
My only question for you is, how do you think that board is going? Do you think it's functioning well? Is there anything you think the city could offer to help it function better?
Well, I think it needs a little guidance. I really believe it needs a little guidance. Everybody has a good heart and they have the best intentions in the world, but I think they're, one, trying to take on too many projects at one time, you know, but, you know, that's something. We had the same people on there for quite a while, and so everything kind of went, you know, in that direction. And now we've got several people that are, not what you'd call, you know, they've been on there maybe a year or two or something like that, but they, everybody seems to have a different place they want to be, and it's hard to get it all, you know, congeled sometimes.
It helps corral efforts.
It, yeah, I think that would help. I think that, you know, we should take on not as many projects as they would like to do. And of course, we'd love to have all kinds of things going on, but there's some that probably should, you know, they should at least consider. I know they talk about the golf course quite a bit, and I'm not sure that we, that we are supposed to be handling that aspect of Parks and Rec. I'm not sure. So, you know, things like that, but, but everybody is very enthusiastic, and they all have the best intentions in the world, for sure. Which I think is half the battle right there.
It's cute.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
The next applicant is Amanda Laugher.
I'm sorry.
Laugher?
Laugher. You're applying for the Parks and Rec Advisory. Want to start on the Soul Tree on their side?
Yeah, let me pull up here, just a second. You were on the Blues Fest board for six years, and what has made you, about that experience has made you want to do this? Well, what I didn't list on there is I left here for 10 years. We bought a house in Morrison Ranch, and it was in the Covenant area, so there was like 2,500 homes. I was on the DRC board for that, which is the Design Review Committee, where the residents would have to submit their stuff to add changes to their houses. I was also part of a lot of the community events there. And one of the, one of the events that they hosted was for the parks so that we can raise money for the parks to keep them upgraded and maintenance and stuff like that. So that's, I came back home and I was like, well, I might as well start getting back into my own community, so keep it going. Are there any particular kinds of recreational activities you think that we need to offer in Trinidad that we don't? Well, I can tell you right now, just from coming back, I'm a grandma now, so I have, I have a granddaughter, and my kids grew up here. A lot of the times, because we have a lack of stuff to do in our parks, I would rather drive to Raton or up north. So if, when we don't have, even though we have nice parks, and even now, they're not that appealing because you drive by Chino Park and there's 20 homeless people sitting outside of it. Me as a grandmother, I'm not going to take my grandchild there. I'd rather drive all the way to Raton and do it that way. So if there's areas where we can clean up stuff and offer, even if we do little festivals and stuff to help get the funding for stuff that we would like to do for these little ones. And then, like Mr. Gabono said, trying to get my dad out to walk with his diabetes now. Can't get him to go walking anywhere either, so. Because he refuses to go on a river walk. I have no idea why. I haven't had a chance to go down there for a long time, so. Thank you.
Welcome back, Amanda, and looking forward to our interview on Thursday with Mr. Kirby.
Yes, I will see you there.
Amanda, what other experience do you have besides maybe leading and participating with recreational activities for children and adults?
Oh, let's see, well, I don't know if you know this, I own, we own a business. It's the old school house venue and reception hall. So I've been able to participate in a lot of events that not only I have coordinated, but other people have coordinated for the community. And we're actually expanding on that for the summer. My sister wants to get some bouncy houses and stuff like that, but I'm working with insurance on that. I'm the one that's freaking out about it. She's just like, yes, let's do this, so. Tether them down. Yeah. Yeah, so, like I said, the Blues Fest, I'm trying to think of what other stuff I, I'm just, oh, I'm on the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce going on a year now, so, and trying to get events and activities together for that as well.
With Yolanda and Desiree?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, we just
It's a good thing.
Yeah, we just locked in our calendar for the rest of the year.
Right.
Yeah.
You're ready for Cinco de Mayo, pretty soon.
Yes.
Not too far. Thank you, Ed.
Okay.
You mentioned you'd rather go to Raton and Walsenburg, to their parks? I mean, other than what you mentioned about Chino with the homeless people. What do they offer that you go over there for?
Um, some, well, they have a lot of, they host a lot more of activities for the kids. There's a lot more stuff, and it's done by the city.
Like what?
Um, they have, they have like different
I mean, we're looking for this to bring up stuff for art parks, is what I'm saying.
So they have like an art festival. I know we have like the water festival, which is awesome for the kids. But Raton, they have stuff going year round. They have art festivals, they have craft festivals. They have, they had a Nerf Ball Festival, I believe, that was last summer. Then they have small little carnivals, nothing big with rides or anything, but they always have carnivals and stuff. It's stuff for the kids to do, and it's, it's an attractive thing to get them to the parks and to utilize them. Because not every kid wants to participate in that, then they're playing on the playground, and they're playing in the grass, and families are enjoying the local park instead of staying home or going somewhere else. And I'd rather our family stay here than waste gas and drive somewhere else because then you have to pay for lunch and everything when you go somewhere else. Why not keep the money local?
So what do you have plans for our parks?
It'd be nice if we can do stuff like that hosted by the city, have different little festivals and little carnivals. I know it's hard because we have to do a lot of it based on volunteer, but when you rally, I've seen it time and time again, even with the Blues Fest. When you rally our community together and it's something that benefits them, they're all in. And I know I did it even when I was younger, so.
Thank you. Do you have, do you think, what skill set do you have particular to Parks and Rec? Ms. Miller mentioned that, you know, there's a, they need some cohesive, some shared vision about what the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission can do. Do you have the skill set to be able to work with along that line?
You mean like a, kind of like a manager skill set or
Try to
Organizations?
But also to try and bring people to a common objective or goal, yes.
I would, well, if I used the skills that I had before because I was a GM and an assistant manager for McDonald's for off and on for 14 years.
Okay.
So managing people is, and especially teenagers, is pretty tough, but
Okay.
I, I get it. Yeah, but it's manageable.
We've got a ton of questions just at you at once, so like everything I've written down has been answered. But, so, it's just like off the wall. What would be like your vision for like sports activity, not just like recreational? I know we keep going towards festivals and stuff like that, but maybe even someone, would you, ideas for like sports to bring to the area, including?
That would be nice because when I moved back and realized that you guys put a volleyball court at Central Park, my daughter, when we moved away, she was in beach volleyball. And that was one of the funnest, funnest things, and I was a coach. I was her volleyball coach for City League. I also have that in my background for four years. But we have, now we can have beach volleyball, and it doesn't have to be, it can be something voluntary if the kids want to do it. And you are going to find kids, because parents want their kids to get out of the house and get off of these and be outside. But we need to give them that option. We need to do more stuff to do that.
Right, yeah, engagement is like key for our Parks and Rec Department. Yeah, youth programs out there, I think we're kind of, we don't, I don't think we have very many of them that we need to have. But I think it'd be great if we could find a group of people that I believe that our Parks and Rec Department could do anything, that'd be great, if we can come up with some kind of idea like that. One other question, they're kind of ruining my head, I apologize. Dealing with groups of people, how, how would you, how do you, how would you sell an idea if you wanted to sell it? How would you sell, let's say, the volleyball, the volleyball tournament?
So, we're coming up, we're coming up on spring now, where it's going to start. The best place to start is after school, where, and focus on the kids, send them, send something home with them, talk with the teachers and stuff so that they have, they have that information. Of course, we don't have the newspaper, but social media and flyers is probably our best bet now because we don't have the radio with Mr. Gabono. Those are pretty much our main sources of advertisement for everything, and it's, a lot of it's pavement work, if you have the time.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Welcome back, Ed.
Thank you.
Question, so would you give further for the, you know, managers talking about the Smithsonian and you were
Yes, as a matter of fact, I was at the opportunity here.
Awesome. He mentioned something about the fact of having that age group from 45 up. I was saying we have a lot of teenagers in town, it's kind of low.
Yeah.
How would you entertain that sector from 45 onward, the, I guess, the older crowd?
The older crowd?
It's not necessarily old.
Yeah, no, I understand that, and I've had several conversations with my family members. A lot of it has, it's kind of disheartening how some of our traditions have gone away.
Right, such, such as?
Like Labor Day was like a whole entire weekend, and you can count on being there from Friday night until long after the parade, after the rodeo and everything was over. And it was like, it was a whole family affair, and people came in from out of town to spend that weekend, and it was always something to do. And that, and that group is the group that it focused on the most.
And that's within the Parks and Rec scope, right? You know, keep that crowd
Yeah.
Active and entertained.
Yes. Go for it.
Thank you for your interest. I have an eight-year-old son. I, I would really like to see more opportunities and better available utilization of the parks, so that resonated with me. To be honest, after listening to other questions, I don't have any, but thank you for your interest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda.
Everything else in the world is.
Okay.
Justine Hastings, are you here? Are you Justine? Come on in. Okay, we've got your application for Parks and Rec. We'll start on with Mr. Williams since you didn't get it.
Um, I I would just say, in in your own words, what what is your interest for being on the board? And and thank you for that interest.
Yes, um, my interest is that um I'm have some free time now. I have no one left at home to take care of or, you know, anything like that in the little ones. So um, I wanna get more involved with my community and um get on another board. I'm on um the Greatville Water Board that I in Starkville where I live. And um, so I'm a little new to the area, but uh I wanna get more involved with my community as much as I can.
Okay.
Hey, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. Uh, how long have you been in Trinidad?
Uh, it's going on two and a half years.
Two and a half years.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so far as Parks and Rec, where do you see your focus? With with a part of a digital zoning and all that. And 'cause it's so many moving parts, you got so many parks, golf course, Fisher's Peak, et cetera. Where do you wanna put your focus?
Well, um, you know, like Ken had mentioned, um, the age group of forty-five and up. Um, I kind of associate uh Parks and Rec with uh exercise. And I think it's important for those type of individuals to have maybe somewhere, um, maybe indoors that they could, you know, walk in, um, you know, something like that rather than um just being exposed, you know, outdoors. Um, I don't know if there's something like that that we couldn't, you know, kind of bring in, but um, you know.
Yeah, we have, we have Rec Center.
Something like that, so.
Needs some, some actions.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
Mr. Trinidad.
Okay, um. Hi, thank you for coming. Maybe if you can give us like maybe um two examples of improvements that you would do to any park of your choice in town if you had, let's say, ten grand?
Well, yeah, that's um, you know, not knowing really how much, you know, things like that cost. Um, but uh, yeah, I think we need more for our little ones too, more, you know, playground equipment um and things like that. Um, you know, I don't have little ones, like I said, or, you know, grandchildren in the area, but um, I don't see a lot of it around, you know, in our our parks. And um, you know, I think we need, you know, maybe a little bit more um, more of that.
Thank you.
So Ms. Hastings, you say on your application, I'm not familiar with the functions of the board, but I believe that I am a qualified candidate. So what leads you to believe that you're qualified for Parks and Rec?
Well, I was, I saw that that board had openings. Um, I was open to any board, not just Parks and Rec.
Okay.
And I think I put that down too on my app, but um, you know, I have good uh communication skills, I have good organization skills. Um, I have, you know, ability to approach people and, you know, talk to them and um, you know, I just felt like I have a desire to come out into the community and help in some way in some board.
Oh, okay.
It was, the park is what, the Park and Rec Board is what started it because that was the uh open application.
Um, have you ever seen or or viewed a Parks and Rec Board meeting before today?
I have not, no.
Okay.
So I'm very inexperienced, yes, and then, you know, a bit ignorant to the, you know, way it's run. But I'm a quick learner and, you know, I guess I have the time and energy and effort, so I'd like to get involved somehow.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, what's your idea of doing the, some of the improvements for the park areas? Uh, I know other you keep of the advance and stuff like that. What else would you like to see done for recreation as far as playground equipment, stuff like that?
Well, I think I would probably need to be more familiar with the parks and what they need individually.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, if you aren't really familiar with, how many parks we have and stuff like that, do you?
No, I don't, but I've.
No, I mean, that's why I was asking, yeah.
Yeah, it's um, I know, I, it's something that, you know, I can definitely do, but instead of, um, you know, not knowing what they would need individually, um, you know, maybe asking the, you know, the community too for their feedback and what they would like to see more of. Um, I know that um, my kids, when they were little, they would do uh like Easter egg hunts, you know, and things like that, a lot of concerts, um, music things, you know, um, things to know more to bring people out, you know.
Well, thank you, Justine, for your interest, just to pigtail off of Council and Thurman of remarks and questions. Do you have a vision in developing maybe new recreation activities or programs?
Well, um, not personally, no. Um, I'd like to be part of the bigger vision though and um, you know.
Willing to?
Yeah, willing to, you know, to help in that aspect of it.
I'm very intrigued by your saying that any any board that's available, you might be interested. Are there any other ones that come to mind that also pique your interest? Because this one has several applicants for two vacancies, but we have other spots on Arts and Culture and Library Board or whatever, but I'm just wondering what else you think might be interesting.
Yeah, I'm, again, I don't know of all the, you know, that are open, but um, you just mentioned the Library Board. You know, that's intriguing to me. Um, my family is, you know, from this area, my great-grandparents are very here and um, I, you know, wanna get to know more of where they live, what they did and all that. So I've um, been going to library and um, you know, I enjoy doing that. So that would be something that um I would be interested in.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Justine.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next applicant is Cody. Is Cody here? Nope. Martin Vichicca.
Hello.
Hi, Martin, how are you?
All right, thanks, man.
Sure. Okay, we'll start with you again, give you another shot at it.
Hey, thank you for your time and really thank you for your interest. Um, what what drives your interest in being on the Parks and Rec? Um, so I was born, married, and in Trinidad Colorado. Um, I've spent my adult life basically in the field of uh Parks, Recs and, you know, landscaping, and I'd like to get back to the community.
Um, you were saying landscaping, right? Why don't you just apply for a job with the city?
I have a really nice job right now, working with the Trinidad Construction Group.
Gotcha, okay, I was wondering.
I uh, I'm actually involved in the project, the Parta Project. I'll be kind of running the landscaping over there as we move forward there.
It's a plus. Um, also, um, where do you wanna see yourself landing as far as the focus in volunteering? Parks and Rec, where do you wanna?
Well, I'd like to help out wherever I can. Um, I'm gonna bring something up, probably a sore subject, I know the golf course kinda is with you guys. Um, I cut my teeth in the golf industry, that's kind of where um, you know, I spent the majority of my adult life was uh first out of Cougar Canyon, then uh over in Rattone Country Club. I spent about close to a decade over there, kind of bringing that golf course back to the shape that it was in.
I worked over there for a while.
Yeah. And um, you know, then I had the opportunity to work for uh Psy up here at the hotel and kind of get to know a little bit about what people coming into this town are looking for on when the, when they're just stopping in for the visitors. So uh, you know, I think I'm pretty well-rounded when it comes to the, to that aspect of what the locals might like and what reserves might like when it comes to, you know, just coming to town or what the locals might like uh for activities. Excellent. Yeah.
Hi, thank you. Uh, how would you engage? How would you engage the youth to come out to the programs that you would want to initiate?
Well, I think that the schools have a pretty good foundation for what they're doing. I know that our schools are combined in a lot of sports. So I'd like to see maybe during the summer more um, more youth activities. I don't know if, you know, if you maybe reach out to the schools for help or or something like that, but to get the kids out more. Um, with the new ballpark coming in at Central Park, I don't know if it's an option, but it'd be really nice to to see the kids get to play in that nice stadium, you know, and things like that. Maybe is some form of uh, you know, just getting them, getting them out there and get the adults out more to the games as well. You know, it would, I think it'd be really nice to incorporate some adult activities. I don't know how many adult activities we have, softball and things like that. But uh, you know, as far as that, as far as the baseball field goes, goes now with that particular park. But uh, I think you could also with adults do more, um, you know, with basketball and things like that and things like that. Uh, swimming is another touchy subject. I know people sometimes would rather go to Rattone and things like that. But uh, you know, I think there's, there's an opportunity here in Trinidad to do, to do more, you know, if you can, to try and get the kids out there in the summer, you know, to get outdoors instead of on their phones and things like that. You know, the skate park has kind of been forgotten, but uh, you know, Tony Hawk Skate Park here in town, you know, we don't promote that enough, honestly, in my opinion.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Martin, is your employer okay with you? I mean, if you need to take time off, I know the Trinidad Construction Group is pretty good about civic involvement. Would there be any problem with you?
As as long as I um make them, I mean, they're aware that I'm here today and uh, you know, generally we can plan things in advance. Um, they are pretty forgiving when it comes to emergencies or certain things like that. Um, you know, as long as things can be planned, but they do understand that, you know, things come up.
So you have a knowledge and a background on actually the physical aspects of a public park?
Uh, yes, ma'am. I'm uh, I'm involved right now, I'll be the uh, the lead, I'm actually the landscape manager for the construction group right now. So they brought me on to facilitate and implement what the architect has in mind, so, yeah.
And are they doing, just to see what your qualifications are, are they doing, they're doing recreational landscaping down there too, right?
It's the plan, yes, there's gonna be exercises activities and things like that.
Thank you, Martin.
Absolutely.
Have you been in on a community center, Rec Center?
I have.
Okay, played sports in there, basketball, stuff?
Yeah, when I was a, when I was a kid.
What do you think for improvements there?
And are you talking about in the gym areas specifically?
What, the whole place, the whole building? I mean, we offer different things, do you have any other ideas what we can do in it?
Well, I'd really like the frisbee golf that you guys have here. Uh, that was one thing they implemented over in Rattone. I don't know if you know, it's one of the fastest-growing sports right now. Um, you know, if we could promote that more or, you know, see what we could do to improve the course. Um, you know, I don't know how often people get out there to actually take care of it, like they do the trails and things, I know they do, you know, and that's, that's really important too, the the trails and the areas, but uh, you know, let's not forget about what's, what we have already as well.
Okay.
Martin, yeah, you seem very well-versed in recreation. Uh, what other strategies do you think would need to be utilized to have a successful recreation program?
Uh, definitely positive positivity with the community. Um, I know it's, you know, um, I know the golf course uh isn't a great example, but uh, they don't really play too well towards the uh everyday average Joe that wants to go out and and do things. I think that we should, as a community or as as a city, try to get the community more involved when it comes to just the the activities. If we could hold certain days at certain parks or just get them down there to kind of see what improvements are being made and what, you know, what we wanna do. When we do something new, like what they're doing at Central Park, I hope that we invite people out to see that. You know, that that we put money back into the city, that that we did this great thing. And I really hope it's gonna be a, you know, workable.
So how would you spark the interest of our youth instead of playing games on their phones and actually getting some physical activity?
Competition, you know, drives kind of, I don't know, when I was a kid, I was super competitive, you know. Get, you don't have to make it a cash prize, but you know, something, something fun for them, you know, as as a prize. Uh, free passes to the swimming pool or something like that, you know, for.
We used to have that.
Yeah, or something like that, you know, just.
We even had free little coupons at the library, if we finished a book, you'd get an ice cream cone.
I was gonna say ice cream, but.
So let's, it's making, this looks like this would be the first board that you might ever serve on.
Yes, ma'am.
What motivated you to want to be on a board?
Um, you know, uh, I moved back to town uh a while back to just, to 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 take care of my father and um, he was a huge part of this community. And um, you know, I think I'd just be given back to the community and and that kind of, kind of sparked me inside. He was a huge part of this community and I wanna just uh kind of put my place here as well, you know.
I love that, that, but several people today have come forward who have not ever wanted to be on a board but have grown up here, and that, I think is very heartening because we need um people like them, a great example to people they know, know their life, here's a way you can get involved and have positive impacts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
Thanks, ma'am.
The next commission is the Urban Renewal Authority. I'm assuming that EK Hance has not re-entered the, no. Okay, and the the second applicant is Luis Lopez and staff asked for reappointment without a second interview. So we'll forego Ms. Mr. Lopez's.
If uh, if I may?
Yes.
I'll defer. I was just gonna say, um, I uh work pretty extensively with Luis and his contributions are uh really self-evident when you work with him and I think he'll, he's a real asset on that.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, the next board is the Corazon de Trinidad Historic Main Street Board, Shannon Jackson. Hi, Shannon.
Hello.
Thank you for being patient.
Oh, no problem, don't thank y'all for having me today, good afternoon.
Ms. Uncle Tree will start with you.
What do you understand the Main Street Board does?
Main Street Board is responsible for the revitalization and historic preservation of the downtown district and economic development.
And what about that makes you work to to be involved in there?
So right now, I'm the manager of the Trinidad Smokehouse. Um, I also own a creative agency that's on the third floor, the A.R. Mitchell. So I can say I I definitely have a vested interest in Main Street. Um, I moved here about two years ago. Me and my family, we plan on making Trinidad a forever home. I want to be involved, it's something I've done before. I've worked in the hospitality and entertainment industry for thirty years now, it's the only career I've ever had. I've held multi-management positions from upper-level management to consulting. Um, I want to help Trinidad, I want to help revitalize the downtown area and I'm a firm believer in rising water, growth, and boots.
Have you ever served on the board before?
No, ma'am, I have not, that would be a first for me.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that was one of my questions, your managerial experience and and how you uh outsourced some of the uh funding for your experience with that.
The outsourced of, as in like grants that helps out with the funding of downtown?
Yes.
Um, I would definitely, that would probably be my weakest um asset to it. I've never actually done any grant writing or anything like that before.
Okay, but your managerial experience speaks for itself.
Yes, sir, I've um, I've probably got about twenty years of management experience. Um, area management, general management, consulting, all in the hospitality and entertainment industry.
Okay.
Your interest in the historical part of the Main Street is particularly what? Uh, so replace buildings?
Well, I actually, oh, no, sir. Um, I would definitely be about the preservation. I think that's one of the unique aspects of Trinidad is we have some of the oldest buildings in the state. I talk to people and tourists every single day at the Smokehouse. I'm constantly touching tables when it comes to tourists. That's the one thing they wanna know, they wanna know, what is this building? Why is that building, when was this building, you know, built? Was the Smokehouse built? Was the Smokehouse built, the building we set in? Um, a lot of people that come here are extremely interested in the history of Trinidad. They love the fact that our buildings are a lot untouched. Um, they love that. They go to these other towns and it might be one little wall or one little section that's original, but the rest of it is just completely done over. Um, the town that I moved here, I spent six years in Nacogdoches, Texas. It is the oldest town, uh, in Texas. It's one of the oldest towns in the U S, it's on the original 13. Uh, they actually have the oldest continuous street in the United States running straight through Nacogdoches. I owned a business on Main Street in Nacogdoches. We had a coffee roast street and coffee shop. Um, we helped them. I did not serve on a board there, but we definitely helped them revitalize the Main Street area there by hosting various festivals, uh, various events.
Thank you.
Shannon, I've been to the Smokehouse many times and I've never heard you talk. You manage that place with your eyes.
I'm impressed.
So your managerial skills and your leadership, leadership skills are pretty evident. I think you have a unique perspective because you're down, down Trinidad a lot. What would you say are, what would you want the Historic Main Street Board to start concentrating on?
You know, I think the economic development of downtown is, is extremely important. Um, I think we're doing pretty good with the historic preservation. Um, I really want to see Trinidad as an entertainment destination. Um, I would also like to rebrand downtown Trinidad. You know, we're commonly known as the cannabis capital of the U S. And unfortunately, as y'all know, that's going away. Cannabis sales are down 40% across the state. And I don't see that increasing with federal legislation being on the board and then more states going legal. Um, I just don't see that continuing at all. I love the fact that we are rebranding as an art district. I love the fact that we're trying to rebrand as an outdoor area with our state parks. Um, I think we need to continue that. I think we need to educate our restaurateurs and our operators. I think we have some great people that operate downtown. And I think utilizing them is gonna be our absolute best asset. Those are the people that are shaking hands and kissing babies every day as the people roll through Trinidad.
Thank you, Shannon. Now that I know who you are, I'm gonna go talk to you.
Hi, thank you. If you could come up, if you had the ability to do one project downtown, what would be that, that one project that you would put?
A revitalization of Blues Fest, except I would not like to focus on one genre. I would like to throw in music festival. Um, I moved here in my, I was literally here in Trinidad for two days when I got the job at the Smokehouse. My initiation was the first weekend of Blues Fest. So, um, you know, I seen Trinidad at, at one of its busiest times I've ever seen it. It was just absolutely insane. Um, I think we can replicate that as much as we want. Not, you know, literally as much as we choose, I believe we can replicate that. I met people that weekend that had came all the way from Canada, came all the way from California, literally just to be at Blues Fest. Um, people absolutely travel for entertainment. And I still believe that. I, I believe we always will. Um, with, I mentioned I'd like for us to be an entertainment destination. I think that's very possible.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I know this guy, we, uh, we talk all the time.
Yes, sir.
I got the opposite experience.
Okay.
We, uh, you know, he's very outgoing. Customer service is great, so I just want to start with that. So you said this is your first time being on a board, right?
Yes, sir.
Or trying to be on a board. Do you own any businesses in the Corazon?
Uh, I have, uh, we're on the third floor, the A R Mitchell. I have what's called Visionary Works. We're a photography creative agency. We're a B to B. We focus on product photography, creation of like training videos. Um, we focus on taking pictures of things that are gonna be useful for businesses. We're not a whole lot on the nature and people side of it. Um, we focus a lot more on the B to B aspect.
I really want to ask you this question. I'm not so sure it's related to, uh, the board. I'm asking out of hoping, out of hoping that you were there. Did you happen to attend the, um, strategic planning public meeting recently?
Yes, I was there.
Good. Uh, that's encouraging to me. I mean, I think, um, the vision that you have is really what Trinidad needs. Um, you know, if we put more people in the streets, we'll, we'll help every business that's there. So I'm, I'm certainly glad to hear you were there. Uh, I appreciate you applying. Um, I don't have any questions per se though, but thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate y'all having me here and thank you for the consideration. Y'all have a great day.
You too. Thank you, sir. Okay, next up is Eleanor Rio, last but not least. Patience.
Yeah, patience. That's fine.
Start with you, Mr. Williamson.
I'm not, I'm not gonna change my question now.
Okay.
What, uh, what is driving you to apply to this board? What's your interest in?
Well, actually, I'll be honest. I thought I was applying for an event planner position of some sort. So when they called me and said that this was for Main Street, I wasn't exactly sure what it was all about. But I thought, and my application's very lean, I think, because I did it while I was in Facebook. To be honest. Uh, but I, you know, I have been, I've born and raised here in Trinidad. Uh, left and came back after 37 years. My career has gone from Chicago, Houston, Seattle, I've been around. So I have a lot of background in, in management primarily, just like the former gentleman. Uh, I've been in I T for many, many years. But I've, right now, I'm currently doing, um, work as a contractor. I'm a contractor from a group out of Hillsboro County. And I'm doing work there, so I'm using program management skills right now. Um, and I, that takes a lot of work. I don't know if y'all know what a program manager is or where a project manager is. Maybe you know that term better. But that's all about managing people, that's managing events, that's managing money, that's managing, uh, every, uh, highs, managing lows, managing cross teams. So I just think from an event management perspective, that's kind of, uh, my, my forte.
Thank you.
How are you doing?
Good. How are you?
I'm good.
Good.
I've done some.
You're here.
Thanks. I've done some, uh, event planning in my day.
Yeah.
Uh, a lot of catering, so I get what you're saying when you say that can translate to other aspects. Um, so apart of being a, uh, a Main Street board, what, what do you want to do creatively to, uh, see the board?
Well, you know, I, I listened to all this and I think I came back right after being gone for many years. And I looked, and I've been sitting back for 15 years, kind of looking at everything and kind of understanding what I knew as a kid when I went to school. I took two years of school here at T S J C. Um, and I, you know, I think what I see is I'd like to bring the local people to understand what we have. I think somehow we've lost the locals. It's good to bring everybody else and we need the funding, we need the money, we need all of that, right? But somehow we need to get the local people interested in what's going on downtown. And I don't see that really. I see, um, new people coming in with all their art, with all their plans, awesome. But I think somehow we need to bring in our people that have been here for years and years. And they don't have a clue what's going on. So my goal is to see what would happen from a historic perspective, to bring those people who knew what was going on, bring them back in, get them involved and get them moving forward with the rest of everybody else that's trying to do the work.
Do you have a plan in your head that?
I think that we just need to really somehow communicate better, right? I mean, somehow we need to communicate and get this out. All these wonderful things that I hear going on, you don't see people participating that have been here for years. Why is that? Why is that? And I'd like to see that to happen. And I, and I don't know how we would communicate 30. I opened a business when I first came back and to get word of mouth. I was advertising, I was paying advertising and I was going on K C R T. And you know what? None of it worked. And it was all about word of mouth. And I'm thinking maybe word of mouth somehow that we just expand that effort and try to get people involved again.
No, no. Hi, Eleanor. Uh, your, your background in that key is amazing. I can attest to that. And, um, I think you'd be an asset on any board that you would serve. Um, and one, one of them, if you would, if you don't get chosen for this one, would you be interested in other boards?
I would, yeah. I'd like to start, uh, just spending more time in the community. Uh, I was asked to join the Chamber of Commerce when I opened the business. I thought about that. I actually went to Hispanic, um, Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce.
But I went there, wasn't quite interested in that, thinking of going to La Casa over here, Casa de Composición, trying to join that. But yeah, so anything that would get me re-involved with the community. So I can understand what's really going on, right? I can't comment to you and say I have all these wonderful plans because I'd really like to understand first before I plan. Because that's my nature, right? I'm a planner by, by, by trade. But I understand that you have to understand what you're trying to plan before you actually throw out all these wonderful ideas.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So now that you know, you kind of have an idea of what Historical Main Street Board is, are you still interested?
Uh, I am. I think I am. I think, and I hate to say that in that way, but I, I really need to understand. I, the gentleman here that spoke before me probably gave me a better idea of what it's all about, right? Uh, but I, I think I would, if I, if you would allow me to come in, Karen, and learn and, and get an idea and a feel, I, I could contribute in some way. Um, you know, I may not be the best and the brightest in, in plans, but I could actually help.
You know, I was liaison to the Historic Main Street Board and there is some event planning involved in that.
Yeah.
Historically, there was anyway, but, you know, your professionalism, I think you could do a great job, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, that's just pretty much what I was gonna ask you, you know, you were, I think you'd be a, a real good fix in some of our boards. This one here, I mean, I'm not saying you're not this one, but yeah, your enthusiasm and, and like I say, professionalism is really good.
Well, thank you. Yeah, Trinidad is definitely something. My family's been here for years. So it's, it's always been kind of an interest to me to see. Yeah. No, I had to sit back for a while. I had to enjoy my time a little bit before I could do anything more.
I concur with, uh, thank you Eleanor. I concur with Mayor Grego and Councilman Shu. Any other experience, knowledge or, uh, perspective you would bring to the Historic Main Street Board?
Well, I, you know, I've been in many big cities, right? So I've been in Houston, I've been in Chicago, I've been in Seattle and not to mention all the parallel done throughout the, the countries. But I think that just having that exposure and seeing some of the things that these people do, maybe we could apply it. Not necessarily, but maybe, you know, like the case of Chicago, you know, all these different places that they, they have people from together. Um, I love the Blues Fest. He, he mentioned that before. Somehow I would like to see us get Blues Fest in here, but not only blues music, but why don't we go with different genres and do it once every quarter, some different genre? Um, because I've been exposed to all of that, I, I just feel like maybe I could contribute, uh, along with other folks, right?
How does a, uh, property become listed in the National Register of Historic Places? I, do you know?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I don't know, but I'm sure I could reason find out. I'm sure, but I don't know, honestly.
Eleanor, I'm, I'm thrilled that you are back and that you are excited to get involved. We, we need your voice very badly. We also might need you around here. I'm just saying. Write in a resume with the city because you have great skills and I, I love to hear some of your advice.
Well, thank you. Actually, just a little bit historical, when I quit the, when I quit the company, started the company, every day I do work here. And I worked like crazy to try to get in, to get the contracts, get every, and I could not get in, I could not break in. And I think it was because maybe people didn't know, know what we were trying to do or know me or know any, you know, but again, that goes back to, it doesn't matter how much you advertise. And then it's a lot of who you know, right?
You have wonderful skills.
Yeah, well, thank you. Yeah, it's been a long career.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Eleanor. Thank you.
Um, Mayor, may I request, uh, that I at least speak on the, um, T P R issue? I really do need it.
I, I kind of thought it was gonna go that way. So we're gonna move item five, State Proposal to Combine Transportation Planning Reasons. It's very important. And Mr. Williamson is on the board of the T P R, Curious Affiliation with Congress. So, Mr. Williamson, are you gonna present?
Um, I can. Uh, I will make this, uh, really, really quick. Um, House Bill 23 dash 1101 has proposed that the, um, state, uh, combine, um, the southeast, um, T P R as well as the south-central T P R. Um, there's a limitation statute, limitation of how many T P Rs are around the state. So they wish to split a mountain, uh, T P R. Um, and in order to maintain the same number of T P Rs to the state, they're gonna need to have to combine. So they've picked the southeast and the south-central. The problem with that, and, um, I do need to leave shortly, so. Um, the problem with that is we, we are losing, uh, representation and, uh, voice, really. Um, also, um, when you look at the, um, handout, those eight, geographically speaking, I mean, we're two really, um, opposing areas. Uh, transportation wise, we're two opposing areas. Um, so south-central, Los Angeles County, Orphan Hill County, we're, we're the southern gateway to the state. Um, tons and tons of traffic comes through this, uh, port here. Um, southeast, there's no major arterial roads and that's not to say that they're less important, but, um, they're all secondary highways and they're maintained, um, they're maintained in a, in, in different ways. So I think it's, uh, disingenuous to say that we can be combined as one T P R and maintain, uh, all of the, the things that we need to. Meanwhile, as is, um, seems to be the problem, one of the, um, recurring themes, um, the north part of the state will increase their voting power. Um, and ultimately, um, I have, I have a fearful we may even end up losing funding over it. So the T P R is an exceptionally important, um, agency for our area. Uh, I think we need to retain, uh, our autonomy. And to that end, um, there's going to be at least two more hearings in March. Uh, we really need to make our voices heard. One of the primary ways that we can make our voices heard is with a letter of opposition. I would really like to see that, um, signed by our, the whole city council. Obviously, I think if you guys have anything more to ask of me, I would gladly speak to you offline. Um, it's something to consider. Uh, in opposing the split of the T P R, um, there, there's really no downside. So hopefully we can get that done and, um, and, and see that change not happen. I've spoken, uh, the mayor and I've spoken to Steve and we're gonna start having, this is ancillary to it. We're gonna start having a staff presence at the T P R going forward, so, um, it's just a big, uh, a big problem.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay, um, did Los Angeles County file any kind of opposition?
They have, yes.
Okay, it's not at the end of this report.
Oh, well, I know, I know.
And something else.
Yeah, I know, I know that they have and they are, they are going to again. Um, and, uh, Councilman, sorry, Commissioner Felix Lopez, um, was in attendance to the T P R meeting on Wednesday and spoke adamantly against it eloquently. Um, as well as, uh, Luis Lopez and then, um, Council, sorry, Commissioner Delucha from, um, Orphan Hill County also spoke against it, as well as the mayor. But the, the public hearings are coming up and I think it's just really important that we make our voice heard and that we don't allow our, our, uh, vote to be removed, so.
Another question. Um, I noticed that it said somewhere in your. I noticed that it said somewhere in Page 94 that this region is expected to lose approximately 18% of its population by 2050. What are they working from on that?
I have to be honest, I don't know what, how that projection is. I think it's, again, I don't want to sound, it is an intent to remove funding from this area.
Right.
But, I mean, the state, every vehicle traveling into the state comes through, primarily comes through I-70 or Southern Colorado, I-25 or Northern Colorado, I-25. And there's some smaller highways that do feed it. But primarily commerce comes in on 70 and 25. So to say that we're going to be marginalized is wrong.
I just wondered if that's something that is vulnerable, that those stats that they're citing, where are they getting that?
That's a good point. I mean, I can, I can look into that, but. Yeah.
What about our lobbyist? Have we contacted him?
Yes.
Yeah, he's been apprised and gonna speak against it. We'll have, as we approach, we will have more dates. And I think anyone that's available can sign up to speak out on that. I would certainly think, although we may want to make an organized and concerted effort so we maintain semblance of professionalism, so, in that process.
There was something too, in the, I think in the letters of opposition, that Intermountain and TPRs, if they're trying to split, don't want that. They aren't asking for it, and so I think that's not helpful.
Right, and so hopefully, hopefully we can, we can get this done.
What's behind all this?
Well.
Is this a politic? Is it a politic?
Reading between the lines is an attempt to centralize more of the state's money to that, to that region. I mean, that's, that's the conclusion that one would come to. I think that's fair to say. So, and the projects of the TPR managers are really, really important. I mean, like, well, we're gonna have that presentation of the state coming up, but. It's important that we retain our voice here. And then even, speaking geographically, I mean, how long of a drive is it to Bahuta? It's gonna be, what, two hours? So.
Two hours.
Yeah.
Hour twenty minutes.
I don't drive that way that much. But my point is, to, to even say that the meetings are gonna be tenable for a lot of people is tough. I mean, Frank makes a commitment to go to ARPA, and that is a big commitment. If I'm in, Mayor, may I speak to the liaison?
Yes.
I know that I was doing some addition, or some note-taking. I think we have six liaison points to fill. Some, some people are on more than others. It's not an accusation, it's an observation. And on the, the ARPA board wasn't listed there either, so, interesting. And maybe that it's a voting position, but the Cog is a voting position, so I respect that. If there is interest, I would, I would, if there was a need, I would express interest to serve as the Trinidad Military Liaison. But that's everything I have to say. With your permission, Mayor, I request to vacate your meeting.
Yes, sir.
All right.
I know you've got more important business somewhere.
Well, I would not say that, but I do have a.
It's very important. So I attended that same meeting, the TPR meeting, but I did it virtually via Zoom. And it was very interesting to me that our colleagues in this area of Orphan Hill County were adamantly opposed to doing this. And you look at some of the figures, the vehicle miles traveled, it does not make sense. We've got an interstate coming through Los Angeles County that has, has got to have more vehicle miles traveled for South Central TPR, which is us, is 1.3. Southeast is 1.2 million. I mean, we have an interstate that has, I know, quite a few more vehicles. So I think what we're trying to do in council tonight, and I'm just subbing for Councilman, I'm sorry, Williamson, is to see if we have a consensus among council. Is something that we do want to oppose the addition of Southeast to our TPR? Does anybody have any opposition to doing that? Sometime in the future, if there are hearings in Denver, I would suggest that we all get on and testify virtually, if we can, to opposition. This is very, very important. And, you know, that our interstate and our voice and where that money goes is.
Is this just an estimation? Because even in the truck vehicle miles traveled, we're not even listed in the top two. I mean, how many trucks go through here?
I don't know how they came up with that. I just saw that over the weekend, but.
So consensus is opposition?
Yes.
Just an observation, I'm sorry, Mayor. These numbers are from 21. They did the study in 2021. That was COVID time. We didn't have any travel through here. So that's giving us, that's not fair to us. We have so much traffic coming from New Mexico, plus New Mexico was shut down. They completely closed themselves off to us. So these numbers are not, not accurate for what we normally have.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Okay. So the consensus is to oppose the consolidation. Boards, Board and Commission City Council Liaisons. I, for one.
That's why they put that there.
Would like to take, we could discuss it, but I'm kind of reluctant to continue on with this, and I'll tell you why. I think we need to have discussion, especially after talking to some of the applicants and discussing, especially Parks and Rec and those commissions, about combining, like Urban Forestry, they're meeting now. What is council's thinking on this?
I think the prior areas to always say that there wasn't enough interest to fill these boards. And I don't think that's true. I think there's plenty of interest and there are some that are more popular than others. But I think it's more better letting people know what they're about and what they can do. But I'm very encouraged by what I heard today.
Yes.
And I think that each have a focus. The only one that I've always thought probably could be possibly combined in some ways Arts and Culture and Creative District, but Creative District is no longer a city board, so it would have to become a city board again. And they do have kind of different functions, so I think they're okay. I don't think there's any here that are, I don't think we have that many, honestly. So I don't think, I don't, I don't support that.
Okay. Okay, let's go. So Arts, Culture, and Advisory is Miss Ogletree. Parks, Rec is Naaman Derman, Urban Forestry Board. Did you know you were on the?
Been on that for the terms, but there was never a board. Because it was only me and Karen. And then there was no board members, so we never met.
And the reason I bring up the question about, let's talk about it tonight, but let's not assign anything, because I'm also assigned to the Urban Forestry Board.
Yes.
So that's.
We have some good folks on that though now, some very well-educated people.
Yes, we do. Library Advisory Board is Aaron. Lodging Tax Advisory Board, I think that was Mayor Rico's.
Yes, that was his.
Cortez County Trinidad Historic Main Street Board. We have an opening, City Military Liaison. We have an opening, Action 22. Trinidad Golf Association is Naaman. South Central Planning is Aaron, and that's for the TPR. Council of Governments is Aaron. They have me listed as the Chamber of Commerce Liaison. Even though I go to the meetings, I haven't identified myself as the liaison. CML is myself and Miss Ogletree.
That's inaccurate, because Manny just was appointed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, man.
That's wrong. I did that in a hurry on Friday.
So I need your guidance, Steph. What do you think we should do?
Now I know, I guess.
Here. Spread the kayak in.
Oh, okay. What do I think you should do? Well, it's a work session, so you can't do anything until Tuesday as far as voting for these liaisons. But what I would recommend is that you have people volunteer for various boards. If there's people who are on as a liaison currently and they want to stay as that liaison, they should speak up and let you know that that's the case. It doesn't ever hurt to have more than one liaison in some cases. I would say a good for instance is, you know, the Golf Association. They've asked for a liaison for a number of years. It wouldn't hurt to make sure that there's always at least somebody that's attending their meetings. And so maybe if you identify a couple of liaisons, then you have that continuity. Same with Parks, I think. The Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, that's, that one's a tough one.
One of the two tough.
You are. And really and truly, their entire focus is supposed to be on creating that master plan. And the charter says every five years, they bring forth a master plan that says, "This is what we should have with the parks, this is what needs to be done." And really and truly, what's happened, based on their agendas, is they're looking at programming and things that, and really trying to push that programming on, on the city. This needs to be done, and I would encourage you to even look at their agendas. The last one said they need, I don't remember if they said, they need to pressure city council or something along those lines.
It's a little harsh.
It is, it is, and.
Our, our meetings are a little, I'm like, you know, you're the well-put-together board, so don't have to do anything else, just relax. You get the movement instead with government, and they wanna be their, kind of like their own.
They want to be feet on the ground. Which, I don't want to knock them for doing that, but at the same time, you know, there were, there's been a few back and forths, well, you know, no, we can't afford to do this programming right at the moment. And it shouldn't be coming from them, and there shouldn't be that pressure coming forward to city council, those sorts of things. So again, maybe another area where we need more than one liaison that's really there speaking and saying, "This is what your focus is. Let's not make it more than what it needs to be, or more than what it should be." Especially when then their agenda results in, "Oh, let's go put pressure on city council." "Oh, it's a pressure campaign, that's how it's been working." And it's gone out like that a few times. I haven't demanded their agenda, but I think that it would be helpful to have good, strong liaisons so that you help keep them focused too. And they understand what their roles are. I would love to say, well, staff should keep them focused. Well, we do have, we have two staff people that go, and I think they feel, they don't feel necessarily like they should be speaking up against them because they're volunteers, and it's, it's just challenging. It's challenging to have these boards and to keep them in line and doing everything that they need to be doing with respect to open meetings laws and open records laws and all of it. And so work council can help in that regard. It's helpful to us as much as it is to them too, so that they can through you let, let the city know what their ambition is.
I had to do a lot of that with Arts and Culture when I started with them, because they were, it was a whole new board, they had no idea what they were supposed to be doing. And just bringing it back to, what does, what does the code say? What do you do?
And I'll say, they have really made that turnaround with your help. Because I remember those days too.
That's been encouraging.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's kind of what we need, that's, that's just my recommendation. Urban Forestry, they have been meeting more regularly, so now would be a good time to, to be liaisoned. And honestly, I put that list together very quickly on Friday. I knew it needed to get in front of council and just being a little short-staffed, so.
It seems like, I don't know if we need to prioritize some of these boards and commissions, because to me, like South, Southern Colorado Economic Development District, we don't even have a liaison for.
No, we don't. We've listed that, we've had on and off relationships with SED. It wouldn't hurt to identify somebody. Should there be a meeting that comes up so that we make sure that somebody from our community is representing Trinidad.
Okay.
Okay. Same with Fox West Theater Alliance, we don't have a council liaison to that. It would again be a good idea, just to protect the city's interests, if somebody would attend those meetings and represent the city. Partners for Drug-Free Community, is that still an active board?
You know, it's, it is. I called, I got ahold of Marcy Key, who's with, help keeping Trinidad safe. And I said, "Is this still a going concern?" And she said, "Yes." "Let me make sure you're on the email list," and I am, but it's a different thing. It's called a coalition, I wrote it down somewhere. It's a different, it has a different focus. I think they decided they didn't want the drug-free ban, or they wanted it more about a coalition of people who care about the community, and they're addressing all the community needs. And I technically stepped off of the drug-free board years ago, so I'm not sure why I'm still on here. Wouldn't be a bad idea to have somebody involved in that.
So why, why can't we put two or even three city councilmen as liaisons? And then if one person can't, then you know who your backup is.
On the, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
On the Mount Carmel Wellness Board? I didn't know I was a liaison, I don't even know what they mean. But I network with.
Honest, guys, I didn't make this up.
I'm sure it's probably the last ones of you.
Some of them probably, the words probably just, you know, either you didn't end up invited, or who knows?
Oh, because I get list, releases at the radio station. Maybe they think that when I advertise or I promote some of their events at the station, I mean, through the airwaves, that I'm a liaison.
I don't have, I honestly don't have a clue. I could probably go back to the minutes though and find where all of these were done. Now, council doesn't have to be liaisons, or have liaisons in all of these. If you want to just focus on the ones where, you know, whatever you prioritize, you can do that. I think definitely we need somebody with TPR, South Central Council of Governments, Chamber of Commerce, you don't have to.
No.
CML Policy, you already completed that, and I apologize for the error.
That's okay. Even though I don't make any.
Park Wooton Board, Councilmember DeBono had basically came in and announced that they had asked him to serve on that board, I assume you're still on there?
Yeah, and if I can't get the money because of the work sessions, Bill Phillips kind of released the information.
So we can remove the Mount Carmel Wellness Board. We don't, there doesn't have to be any sort of a liaison to that. Same with the Partners for Drug-Free Community. We don't have to technically name anyone, but absolutely, you know, you want to continue with whatever that endeavor is, that would be great. Golf Association, I'm back to where, especially because we're in this pivotal year where we need to see how everything's going to go. It would be a good idea always to have somebody at the table with them.
Another reason why I volunteered for that board is because I saw overlap with Parks and Rec and the law courts. I figured, why have two people doing two, the same job? So whatever will work for. So whatever will work for each organization, I'm down to do. I just said, you know, let's do that, so we can have some seamless service. It could be, especially with the optics. A lot of people think, okay, they got Parks and Records over golf course, and then they got a golf course board liaison, and adding too many more liaisons.
Seeing that, again, there's another example. Parks and Rec think that they should have some sort of, I don't want to say an oversight, but in a sense, an oversight, what's happening at the golf course. And truly, we have a lease agreement with them, and so.
Right. So I figured I'd do that, and then we figure the real action, you know? As far as having somebody come on, and then the golf course get absorbed from Parks and Rec, and no longer is part of it. That's why I see it going, I don't see it staying in there.
Right, right.
Does that make sense?
It does. They're known, sort of, you know, they're just completely separate.
Yeah, they're separate.
And autonomous, as Audrey was alluding to, and I, I think Parks and Rec would probably need to have that impression driven home. But anyway, I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry.
The Golf Association is something that I would be interested in trying to help work through those, because they're difficult conversations that need to be had.
Right.
And.
And you're a golfer, aren't you?
No. I have been to the Masters twice, so.
Okay, that makes you a golfer? Sorry.
The Masters. No, I was raised in a golfing family. But I know, I have talked with a bunch of them over the last few months, and I know that they probably don't see me as their ally, but I, I do care about that facility and care about becoming what it should be, which is an asset to this community, to everyone. So I would, you know, if you wanted to sort of with Naaman, or whatever way the council decides, I'd be happy to do that.
Well, I think that would, that's a great idea. So let's go through and take out the ones that we don't want. City council. Do we concur with that?
Yes.
Okay. Arts and Culture is good, Parks and Rec's good, Urban Forestry Board, do we need council representation on that?
I don't know, I've never been, I don't know. I think they're just going to get ramping up, they're putting some programming out.
Yes.
I don't know that necessarily you need somebody right at this time, I think you can omit that one, and.
Library Advisory Board, Aaron's on that one now, but I don't know, he's not available.
And again, I don't know that they need anybody for council liaison. I think we need to be respectful of council members' time as well, because.
There's eighteen boards on there, so we have to cut some.
What if, what if we communicated to them in these boards where we're pulling someone, that if they feel necessary, that we're happy to jump in?
Yes. Lodging Tax Advisory Board, anybody want to volunteer for that one?
You want to? I'm gonna do it, but I kind of thought you were gonna do it.
I am, I will.
Okay.
You want to be my?
I'll be your alternative.
Okay.
Who's it gonna be on here?
The Main Street Board also needs somebody, so.
Anybody volunteers for the Main Street Board?
Not you, Manny.
I was looking at a couple of them. In Street Board, what do they mean?
They mean during the daytime hours, like on Friday mornings.
Oh, in the mornings?
I want to say it's Friday mornings, that's what they meant last time, correct? You have a little. I think it's the first Friday in the morning.
First Friday in the morning? Yeah, if I can just schedule that, I hope they could. I don't know much about that, though. Interesting, I was looking at SED.
Well, SED is good. Yes, SED would be good.
Okay, we'll do Manny, you'll do SED.
Yeah, I'll do the, I'll do the Main Street Board, first Fridays in the mornings, because mornings are cold.
Is it okay if I call you Manny instead of Emmanuel?
Yes, please. I keep forgetting how to spell my full name, it's been so many years.
Military Liaison. I heard you say it was Mayor Rico and Aaron Williamson, as for our parent.
Action 22.
I could do that.
I know those guys, I'm friends with them. Can I, can I do a check first?
You want to check first, are you a question?
See if they still have the same.
Check by next Tuesday.
All right.
Somebody talked about the Golf Association, South Central.
If you need somebody else, I can do a pro ten.
On?
On the golf, with.
You got to.
Oh, you have to?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What about Action 22? You want to do a substitute?
It's a.
Action 22? I guess. Who am I with? Or who am I subbing for?
Maybe Naaman?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just call them and check and see if they.
Okay, if they really?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we've got South Central Council of Governments and TPR, Aaron, and he's doing a great job. CML is myself and Manny. Board Rootin' Board, do we need a liaison for for Rootin'?
Eli's been reporting, I'm sorry, Councilmember DeBono's been reporting on all of their activity. It's up to you whether you find that beneficial.
It's up to you, you know, if you want to.
I'll stay.
Okay, okay. Partners for a Drug-Free Community, or whatever it's called.
We're gonna have, mark that one off, right, we're gonna have a designated person.
Fox West Alliance. Is that something we want? Representation?
I think, I think it would behoove the city to have somebody from city council on that. Steve has been, he's been trying to, you know, carry the ball as best he can. I think recently he's passed that on to our city planner to basically cover those meetings, because it ends up to be a lot to.
Does it?
Mm-hmm. I didn't want staff more on that than some council. That's fine, we'll just leave it as staff, and if for some reason down the road they feel like, we'll ask again, and feel like you need a council liaison. And SED, he said, council membership, yes, I think.
We've gotten covered.
Yep, and we'll, we'll formalize anything that's on here on Tuesday.
The only one that's questionable is Naaman on Action 22.
Tuesday, February 6th.
So I could.
And we're doing, Lodging Tax, we're getting a title, is that what you said?
Not tomorrow.
Lodging Tax, are you, I'm, I'm on it, and you're?
Okay, and the alternative. Okay, good.
Yeah, Sodra, you said we could do multiples if we wanted to, correct?
Well, it's not more than two.
Okay.
And because even if two of you attended at one time, it would be okay, they're all hosting meetings anyhow.
Right.
But.
Yeah.
So do you, we want to recap, or are you guys clear? Everybody clear with your, and I want your parents to sign their homework.
That's right.
Okay, all right, that's clear. So the last item on the work session.
Proclamation policy.
Proclamations.
So Mayor Grego had talked to staff about a desire to make sure council is included in, even decisions when it comes to proclamations, instead of it just being strictly up to, up to her as the mayor, or previous mayor, to sign proclamations. And so, in conjunction with that, though, the city has never had a policy with respect to proclamations. And so, as to not minimize their value, so we've brought forward a few samples of policies. If there's anything in here that you feel, feel like you definitely don't care to see in the policy, once, once we draft one for your consideration Tuesday, you would just please let me know. We will be doing a policy by resolution, and there will be a form that people will need to complete in order to, to request a proclamation. I will tell you that there is a request that was sent for General Aviation Appreciation Month. That's basically what it is, is they.
That's obscure.
It's, well, but it's interesting, because it's.
Huge.
Yeah, and it's, it's been signed by a lot of communities, and you can Google it. General Aviation Appreciation Month.
Oh, I don't, I'm sorry.
So the tie to that was our Perris Stokes Airport, so. And so, and how we should support it, and how it could, you know, how it plays a part to the local economy.
Sure.
So. If city council's not opposed to that, I do have our proclamation prepared for, for the meeting on Tuesday. It's very generic, as far as, you know, details, it does call out the Perris Stokes Airport, though. And then aside from that, going forward, we can have a policy in place, and if it doesn't meet the criteria, we would have to simply let them know that it doesn't meet criteria, and otherwise, we can prepare a proclamation. Do we always have people request proclamations be done, or are they generated? How are they generally generated?
That's what happened. And the reason I bring this up, because several years ago, I had a family member that turned a hundred, and I asked for a proclamation and was refused. So another member of my family asked for the same proclamation file. So I felt that at that point, I think it's unfair to the people that are asking for the proclamation, and I think it's unfair to council. You know, I, I think, you know, there's a mantra of my two years up here in this chair is to be inclusive. You know, I want, I'm just one of seven, and I want you all to have input on it, and I don't think it should be just one person.
And to have a standardized policy, not, not subjective.
Yes.
Does the staff have a lot of input on the approval and the input?
No.
Not really? Okay.
I will say the only exception to that is if it's something that's political in nature, we won't even report it to the mayor, because it's not appropriate.
Okay.
I think we need a clear explanation to the public of what we possibly would consider doing and for, and what is not going to be, sorry, that we do.
I love, I love this sample from Greenville, I think that's the one that I, the first one?
The top one? I liked it as well, it had, it's very clear.
Yes.
It's, it's very clear.
You can ask for, if the proclamation is, what manner the proclamation is, is given. I'm gonna ask for Manny, if they ask the way to be someone. No, it's, it's a joke.
Honorable.
Yeah.
So what I would hope to do is have our policy on our website, along with a form that they complete, so that they can see when they're completing that application, that either if it would be a permissible request or, or not. It would probably help solve a lot of the issues.
Yes. And that way, they can be more specific as to.
Right.
How they want the proclamation delivered. Okay, any objections to that?
I don't, I think though, if it, if it falls within the criteria that we've set up, I don't think we need to take votes on it, I think.
No, 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 well, no. Because not one person is going to have the ability to strike down a proclamation going forward.
And I would just ask that we get something that's a little less hinky looking, and that's the way that. It looks like fake old paper.
Do I see something more modern?
Yes. Yeah, I just don't know why we do that, you can barely read them, for one thing, they're, when they come in our pack, and I'm like, what is this about? So I was looking to see what's out there. Okay.
Right, so a new form to the program, okay. Yeah, those, I think, I think you've just done those a long time, right?
I, I kind of like.
Partly appropriate.
But we're not going to automate this all over. It's, you know, I think the meaning behind it is important.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
If I could, Mayor, I, I just want to ask, there were three people who did not show up for their interviews on boards and commissions. And so, I just, you know, want to ask for consensus on that subject as, as well. The three were Luis Lopez, McKay.
Luis Lopez, not to come.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I guess I missed that, didn't you? Then Cody Clausen, and McKay Harris.
And then there was one other person in there who didn't pick a board, and I don't know whether she was there or not. There's one last person whose name was. Charlene Gwen Rosstrum?
She never showed.
Yeah, yeah, right, she wasn't here either.
She didn't even show up.
Right, she also wasn't here.
I think she, if I remember right, she is going to be on the library board, but, or she wants to, but not until the next go-round.
Okay, that's why we didn't.
I believe so.
So I have a procedural question for you. So are these board members being vetted by the board to which they want to be appointed?
Well, I think that's a decision you're gonna have to, have to make, especially for the ones.
Not vetted to the point of, because some people that came up today didn't even know what their board did.
I know. Right, I think, well, and we'll defer to the expert, I think that's kind of a broader conversation, and that's like why they were, bless you, that's why they were kind of interviewing, but you're right, some didn't know what board they wanted to serve on. Yeah.
We changed the policy, though, we're, we're not requiring them to be vetted, a recommendation come forward from that board to city council. That's why now city council's interviewing everybody.
Okay. But I thought we were going to keep the requirement that they go to a meeting, because the last time we did this, and we appointed somebody, they went to one meeting and said, that's not what I want to do.
I don't think that's how it would turn out.
No, that's all right. We can just continue.
We just appointed, they wanted to resign, they could.
Right, and have a vacancy again. Yeah, I, I think that's, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I was just, can I answer that? I just had a question on that, like, is there like a breakdown of the boards? Like exactly what they do, almost like a, let's say for Generation, it says exactly what they do? And they, do they get that right with that application, though?
They don't get it with the application, they get it when they are appointed.
Oh, so it's like a surprise? Yeah, because I just see it, see it the other way.
Surprise!
I'd be like, you may want to look at this before you even submit your application.
Well, weren't you not surprised to come in and see what you?
Oh, I was completely surprised. I truly was, and it was a very pleasant surprise. But, yeah, I don't know, like, we went through a process for asking the questions, the only objection that I have on this, I would, I kind of wish that each board would have their set of questions they could like us to ask. This way, we actually get consistency with the answers, because we're kind of, you know, we're trying not to be all over the place, but it's, I think it's just, because we were up there, but that consistency, I think, would be great, you know, to know, so we can get to know that person, how good of a fit they're gonna be.
My concern, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but my concern with that is that it kind of is empowering the boards and commissions to say who they want and who they prefer. I mean, I, I think you could get like a non-binding recommendation, perhaps, especially if you're the liaison, and maybe I'm speaking out of school. The question was having the boards and commissions comment essentially on applicants for board vacancies. I just worry that it would become kind of a popularity contest, and, and what do you do with that? Like, they say, we want Bill, we don't want Sue. Then that kind of puts, and I, I've always wondered, does that make sense?
I think I'm lost, because I think my question was just a standardized question, question list from the board. Like, like just what it says, like, we would always have the same questions over and over for, for them. So we got to get a consistency of that person, and then the next person, and then the next person.
I got you.
Yeah, sorry, sir. No, I didn't mean like recommendation, but I just meant like a standardized line of questioning.
Yeah, Mayor, that would be, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that would be my question. I would hesitate to have the boards recommend their own appointees. Standard questions, I mean, they work with each other all the time, so I, I don't see, I, I guess that, that could be appropriate. What would you want as the product, though, of those standardized questions?
I, I don't know, because each board is unique, one from the other. I think some of the questions that we, we ask are pretty, it's organic. I think some of the questions that we, we ask are pretty, it's organic, maybe coming from other questions that are asked previously and it, you know. Let's try it as is.
Okay, it's just a question, it's like, no.
Your other point though about do they understand what their role is? I think what we can do is beep up the website and put a short description and a schedule when they meet. It's out there. Even the description of what they do. I do the website, so I don't know.
Take me there, Desi, take me there.
It's, the citizen interest form is over to the left, it's right there about if you wanna apply for a board. And then each board has how many members, when they meet, what their role is. It's in there, but if you just wanna apply for a board and, I mean, a lot of people don't read first before they...
Yeah.
They should, but...
Have you acknowledged?
Mr. Ruder, we, you missed part of the, it was the meeting. It was the consensus of council that we're all gonna resign or liaison positions and you're gonna represent.
So what you get for leaving?
That's what you get for leaving.
That's good, I will, with my contract.
No.
No, I don't, yeah. And at the end of the day, I'm sorry, missing some of this discussion, but I think the point I would make is that ultimately you all, and I'm sure this has been said, you have to, I mean, it's your job to appoint the boards and commissioners. That's something explicit in our code and our charter. And I just wanna make sure you guys have a process that you're comfortable with, that gets you the information and you make those decisions. You know, I don't mind, it's a public meeting. We've had some boards and commission members who come in with an agenda or, you know, particularly, and we still see it to this day, where they talk badly about the city. We had a training last spring for all of our boards and commission members. We'll keep doing that. I think our staff liaisons are doing a pretty good job of explaining the rules, but we have some feisty people, and I get it. But once you're on a board or commission, your job is to represent the city, just like you all, just like staff. And that's, I think, what makes your task so challenging is you know, we, sometimes we don't know upfront, when we just interview someone, what it is that they're hoping to accomplish.
To your point, I think it might be a good idea to put, or even when we're interviewing people, the first, like, I could say, do you understand that you are held to a higher standard than just a citizen? That you're here to represent the city? And that your actions also reflect on your position as a board member? What do you think about that? Because that's been an issue. And it's been an issue because we have to dismiss board members. And if we can alleviate that, I would love that.
I think the best thing we could do, from, speaking from my experience as a board member and now in this seat, is be really clear about what it is that they, the city, I've turned out, expects them to do. What are they supposed to be working on? And then reward them, thank them when they do that, because they're just giving their time.
Yes.
And I think, if they understand, oh, I'm actually helping move the ball and I'm recognized for that. That is a motivation for a lot of people to want to give more. But if you don't ask very much of them, but just to sit there and look at the ceiling, they... People want to be asked to do.
So I guess we don't even have to... The only board that needs ultimately one, one board member is Corazon. The rest are pretty much a done deal. We don't have to vote, or how does that process stop? No, I mean, do we, we're gonna have to vote, but what I mean is how is that going to be presented to us next Tuesday? Like the Corazon, there's two of them. So... And we're only one vacancy.
That one will be unique. But it is. So recently, Audrey asked me to help with boards and commissions. But today I had an email from the Main Street Board of someone resigning, so we actually will have two vacancies. But that just came out today.
That's awesome.
So that would be easy.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So it works, it kinda works out.
Okay, anything?
Interesting. So if council is okay with it, when there's reappointments, for instance, Luis Lopez has applied for reappointment, I would like to include that just on consent agenda.
Yes.
And the rest will have to be under Miss Lane's business.
Okay.
About the lady that was in front?
Joyce Miller?
Yeah, she, she should be on consent agenda.
For arts, yes. But for parks?
Yeah, she has to be there.
You'll have to make a selection on the parks.
There's only two vacancies and...
Five, yeah. We'll have to vote one for one.
There's four, one.
What, four?
There's four and there's only two vacancies. So how is that process?
Well, did all of them show up? And if they did not show up for that, do you want to nominate?
Cody Clausen didn't show up, but there's Martin, Pachisha, Justine Hastings, Amanda Loger, and Joyce Miller, there's four of them.
So in that instance where you have fewer vacancies, someone will have to nominate. And you'll have to have a second for whomever you want to appoint, whatever, to please us.
So think about it, guys.
Mayor, council members, would you all, I get the organic nature of what happened today. We're just gonna ask questions. Would you like more structure, I guess would be a question I have. I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to say, okay, each interview is limited to seven minutes or something like that. And each one of you gets a question that we go through in a minute's time to respond, something like that. Just for efficiency, just a suggestion, because we very well could get to a point where we have multiple boards with, let's say, twenty different applicants. And that could consume an entire evening if we, you know, give up. And just from an equity standpoint.
How often is this process?
Not, yeah, that's a good question.
Right, not often, but, right, I mean, to avoid...
Is it based on need? There's a lot of things.
It's based on vacancies, yeah.
So you could turn at any moment, that people could drop?
Well, we're always putting out postings.
Also, it's pretty consistent.
And I mentioned it.
It's pretty consistent, yeah.
I mentioned it on the review.
Yeah, and I'll give you a, for instance, we've had vacancies in the Board of Appeals seats. And, yep, that's three vacancies plus two alternates and we cannot get one letter of interest from it. And they don't hardly, I don't even know the last time when they met. They only meet when there is an appeal of our building inspector's decision. And then they review the code and determine whether the code has been interpreted correctly in their opinion by that inspector. And I can't get any much of that.
I haven't seen those posts.
Board of Building Code Appeals, Board of Building Code Appeals.
Well, these ones I saw come up on Facebook. They really flooded Facebook with these ones. But the other ones, I don't, I can honestly tell you, I've never seen them come through social media.
They're always in the same post.
Okay. Those are broken, the other ones were broken apart.
You didn't open the post, dude.
I didn't read the comments. But, but no, like these, it's like, they were weird, they were like individual. I don't know who posted them or did what, but it looked like they stood out a lot more. So it wasn't like this grouping of them, it was like this, like a single Java, single Java. And that seemed to make more, I think that caught a little bit more eyes. Yeah, so I don't know, maybe that might be another way to kinda flood it again.
Yeah. It's a good point, and I guess I would ask the council, our approach in advertising these positions going forward, I think there's two ways we can do it. We could either, if you're seeing individual postings like that, maybe that's, that's good. We could also just have a generic interest in serving on a city board or commission. Go to this website, here are the available options. And it is, okay, so, sorry. I would assume so, but I'm talking like on social media and stuff.
On social media, that I don't know.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. So on social media, I think we should be consistent as well. You know, if you're interested in serving the city, here's the website to boards and commissions, so.
Yeah, because even I like the seniors that are right here, I'm talking about Facebook now. So it's getting a little bit more and more out into the there. So I think they're kinda seeing a little bit more. So, I don't know, Facebook, Twitter.
I like a generic campaign.
Facebook and, people see it on Instagram. Instagram seems like the one that doesn't have, it just flags right away. Because if you post on Instagram, automatically post on Facebook. So it's kind of a whole thing, I don't know, that would be, I don't know, who does that?
Friends, Lydia Nisa.
Nisa, yeah. We'll get with her and see if we can coordinate a little bit more with her.
Okay. Next meeting is Tuesday. Are you ready to meet? Be here or be...
What, Tuesday? What, Tuesday?
The Tuesday, the week, Tuesday?
First Tuesday.
February?
Tuesday. I'm gonna start grabbing spring photos. Taking photographs.